This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Vader City Council meeting. It is Thursday, October 27, 2022, and the time is 6:14 PM.
Jason Dalek.
Jason is working tonight.
Brandon Hall.
Here.
Anne McIntosh.
Here.
Michael Ferguson.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Mayor Shuck.
Here. Andrew Lewis.
Welcome to the United States. Together we are, for which it stands, one nation under God. It is all with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
All right, Mayor's report. Uh, Worden Park, the footers association did get delayed by a couple of weeks, uh, but they finally got those, uh, concrete footers poured, um, and, uh, all the repair work done out there. So the pavilion shelter should be installed. Um, it needed a couple of days for that to get hard to uphold lately. So, um, we're hoping next week if they'll get that, uh, that thing installed in there. Um, the Worden Park jail chimney and roof work, that's also, excuse me, gonna be begin getting soon. Uh, the contractor has the scaffolding in place behind the building right now so they can get up there. And so they're, they're getting ready for that. Uh, also, it's not on the mayor's report, but the gutters for the old shelter that, that's out there. Uh, that contractor said it'll be a couple of weeks, but they're gonna have those installed as well. Public hearing. So the next public hearings at the next city council member, city council meeting on November 10th, um, this will be for the 2023 budget and levy. Um, reminders that there'll be a special council meeting on November 17th to prevent interference with Thanksgiving holiday. So we're not meeting on Thanksgiving. And also in December, there'll be a special council meeting on December 1st to prevent interference with the Christmas holiday, um, as our last council meeting of the month would have fallen just a couple of days before Christmas. Uh, and then, um, there'll be another pub, our last public hearing, uh, for the 2023 final budget, um, on, at that December 1st council meeting. Lots of fun stuff. Um, any council reports?
I have a question on the scaffolding. Is it fixed where the young ones can climb it and purchase it?
Uh, I have not looked to see if, if they have the ladder there or not.
Oh, it, you just climb on the end of it. I've done it before and, uh, it's not secure. If it is a danger.
We'd have some of that orange fencing. We could put that around. I mean, if someone wants, if someone wants to climb it, they're gonna find a way to climb it.
Right.
But we could at least put something around it, um, to make it.
Right.
Yeah, like we tried to stop.
Right, because I already had seen someone eyeballing it.
It's not, it's not the new jungle gym.
Right.
Thank you for the suggestion. Further council comments? Um, moving on to agenda approval. Um, I don't believe there are any changes to the agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the city council, uh, agenda for October 27, 2022.
A motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the city council agenda for October 27, 2022. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferguson. Discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I make a motion to approve the minutes on, uh, 10, 13, 2022.
A motion by Ms. McIntosh to approve the city council meeting minutes for October 13, 2022. The law of 2022. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferguson. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Doctor toes.
I make a motion that we approve vouchers for the end of October 2022 for a total of, uh, for October 2022, uh, $406,293.92.
A motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
A second.
Ms. McIntosh. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Special report from the park board.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
How's it going? Okay, so, um, at the, at Worden Park. I'm Kelly Shai, the current acting chairperson of the parks board.
Thank you.
Would you like my address too? Okay. So for our perks updates, we, she does it every single time. Uh, for our perk updates at the jail, our posts have been ordered to replace the ones that are up there right now. The two of them came in and another two, the other two are gonna be showing up, um, I believe, you said, December, on the 31st. Um, we also have a new basketball hoop that has been ordered and has shown up and it's currently in the shop waiting for John to do the installation. Uh, we had a parks board meeting just a little bit ago and we have updated dates for an events calendar that I'll get written up and typed and submitted into you guys, uh, probably by next week and, but we're gonna have our chipping events, we're gonna have a, a trail to, we're gonna have our trail cleaning and scrap metal event and paper shredding event and possibly a tire recycling event coming up. So, and those are all between, well, it's mostly gonna be in the springtime that that's all happening. Uh, we're also working on a budget request and I'm coming up here soon. We're also, our applications have gotten a little bit more complex, our applications and requests for using parks have, shown us some glitches in our, in our process and so we, we're working on creating two separate different types of park applications now. Just, yeah, and, and, uh, we're also getting ready to go through our park master plan and do updates and everything to that also. And our big thing that we have coming up is, um, we are going to do a Christmas tree lighting ceremony the first Saturday of December and it's also gonna be a holiday bizarre. And we have that, I guess we're gonna be, we need to get approval from the council to be able to host the event. So the church has, is gonna allow us to set vendors up inside their, uh, refree, their fellowship hall. And then we'll have the tree setup, the tree lighting ceremony set up at Worden Park across the street in the area where we're doing the, the grass seed and everything. Um, and we're talking about it being from four to seven o'clock. It sounds like we already have some vendors for develop, we're going through the, uh, we're creating the vendor forums. We're gonna be charging about, or charge $25 a vendor. And we also have, Kristen has made us, we're gonna do a raffle and she's made, is making us three different Christmas wreaths and I'm gonna just turn on one and set up lights here. Anyway, we're gonna be doing a raffle for these for $5, $5 a blanket. As a fundraiser.
Very nice.
The other one's a kid.
Ooh.
Um, and we're looking at seeing if we had someone who was gonna do, we had, actually, it was William Torres' wife was gonna do Molly's to do as another fundraiser for parks, but, but they're being very pregnant right now. She figured that it might be kind of hard to do that. So we're looking at possibly seeing if another vendor, like awaken that they wanna do cider and coffee or cocoa. Um, and then if they're willing to donate like part of their proceeds that they make to the parks for the event. I think, and we are looking, we're gonna probably create, uh, an event list of our items that we need. We definitely need a tree. We're looking for a Santa Claus. Um, probably wanna have some safety, security fencing. We've had some folks express interest in doing, uh, solar light or donate lights to the tree and we're thinking for power purposes, we'll need solar lights. Um, I can't think of what else at the moment and don't have a lot in my care. So I think that's kind of the overall gist of it though. If there's any questions about this or, or anyone wants to participate, let us know.
That was December what?
Uh, Saturday, December 30th, first Saturday. We intentionally made sure that it did not conflict with, with, uh, Casa Rock's holiday festival, which I believe is the second Saturday. And I think there's also, um, the Chehalis Christmas per tractor parade that they have and that's usually the second or third Saturday of the month. So. Yeah, I think, but, um, the big thing is that we do need to have approval from council to be able to host the event. So that, that, that's my ask. I'm actually asking you guys something tonight instead of just giving you an update.
So would someone be interested in making a motion to approve park board's request for this special event?
I'll make a motion that we approve of. Event.
We have a, first by Mr. Parsons to approve park board's request for this special event. We have a second by Mr. Ferguson. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Six in favor.
Mmm, awesome. Wow, that works out.
And if there's any other questions, um, I think everyone else had to get ahold of me. If there's any suggestions, feedback, ideas, you know, anything to keep in mind. It's our first time doing it, so we want it to be awesome and successful as much as possible.
Thank you. Uh, planning committee is not here tonight. I know that they have been working on, they've been discussing, maybe getting not quite so many train horns to town and, um, I know, um, also they're gonna be starting on, um, some new things regarding, um, annexation, annexing volunteers, property owners that are volunteering, um, to be part of the city, um, and, um, so other critical area ordinance updates and things like that. So they're gonna have some things on their plate here very soon. We do. So that is, uh, also announcement for the planning committee. Uh, Mr. Curtis Gall, uh, who the city council just recently, um, approved his appointment to the planning committee, uh, he had to step down already, um, unfortunately for some personal issues, so.
Oh, true.
Yep, so we do have that vacancy on the planning committee still, again. All right, um, moving on to city business. Item number one, public hearing or revenue and property tax levy for 2023 budget. So the way this works is, uh, we need a motion and a second, um, to open the public hearing, um, for a certain amount of time. Lately, we've been recommending just until the public doesn't have any, any more comment and then we close the public hearing after that, so.
I make a motion that we open the public hearing and do it for as long as needed for the public to speak.
A motion by Mr. Parsons to open the public hearing for the 2023 budget and, uh, on revenue and property tax levies. Do we have a second?
My second.
Seconded by Ms. McIntosh. Um, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Randy, was that, uh, was, I was a little faster. Was that, uh, was that a for opening the public hearing or not opening the public hearing?
Oh, aye, for, for.
All right, that's what I assumed. That's the right answer. All right. Uh, motion passes, um, public hearing for the 2023 tax levy on the budget for revenue property tax levy. It's open at 6:28 PM. Uh, members of the public, it is now your opportunity to comment on the documents, uh, on the, on the revenue and property tax levy. It's generally where folks just say, we don't want our property taxes raised. And then council says, me either, and then we close the public hearing. Anyway, so.
I don't want the property taxes raised.
Yep.
And that's second.
Any members of the public have anything to say? There will be another, another hearing later on too. Um, I'll ask the one more, I'll ask again. Any, any more comments, uh, from the, from the public? All right, and this public hearing is closed at 6:29 PM. Thank you, members of the public. Moving on to item number two, accountable to discuss the draft 2023 budget and property tax levy. So y'all have a number of documents in front of you. The thing was the summary, did you get a chance to update that summary page? You know what I'm talking about? Have it? One that talks about the project, the one that talks, the, the single page one that talks about, that talks about the projected and it has like a two-month reserve on the end and stuff. Is that, was that not ready yet?
I, no.
Okay. No, I mean, it's either, it either is or isn't. I don't understand that if it's not. Okay, that one's just useful sometimes because you can kinda see where we are totals-wise, but, um, we'll have it done. And, um, I think I need to have my letter to you all next week. Um, and so that'll have to be part of that. Um, but so, uh, along the, the levy, so, um, this sheet right here, the property tax levy. So Vader has only raised property taxes once in uh, at least 10 years, I think, something like that. Um, pretty unusual, uh, for that. If you look at our, all our neighboring cities, most cities in general, every city, um, raises the property taxes to the max every year. Um, a city is allowed to, to do a 1% raise. It is not a 1% total. It's 1% on top of what we're already doing. So if we're, so in this case, um, if you look at this, a 1% increase, would be an extra $781 to the city. So it takes $781 a year divided out by however many property owners are in the town, which is probably about half of that and you get.
It's based on a hundred thousand dollars worth of property.
Yeah, and so you'd get, you know, a couple of dollars a year increase to your property taxes. Um, so some, you know, roughly, so it's not very much. So even if, so even if the city raised it the full amount that we have, um, banked, so it's, say, this, a city doesn't use its 1% every single year, we can save that for later. And so in this case, the city has, um, over 8%. Save. Is that correct? Is this the full bank capacity I'm in?
Right.
So is that even higher than, you know, so we're probably in the nineties. Yeah, and so, um, every year a city can raise the property taxes by up to, by up to 1%. So that's why we've got, you know, 9% or 10% available to us because it's been that long. And so even if where we were to raise it all the way up, you know, you're looking at around six or $7,000 total increase to the city's bottom line, um, divided by the amount of, um, homes in the city, you know, of course, based on a hundred thousand. And so you're only looking at, you know, it comes out for about a dollar a month per home, or, well, per hundred thousand per home. So if your house is 300,000, you'd be looking at $3 a month increase to your property taxes. Basically, what I'm saying is, we could max it out, raise it all the way up and no one would even notice, so. That's not what we have.
I doubt that. You notice.
Okay. Three bucks a month?
A lot of people notice. That three bucks nowadays can go to food or something.
They can't buy anything nowadays.
Can't even buy a gallon, yeah.
Can't even buy a gallon of milk.
Yeah.
That's true. So, man, I'm not suggesting we do it. I'm just trying to explain to you, um, while these numbers, while it sounds like a lot, when it really gets divided out, it's, it's hardly noticeable. So, that being said, uh, we don't have to raise property taxes. I am positive that once we put that summary together, um, the city is very safe and as far as property tax and the general fund is concerned.
And that's $3 a month if you're worth $300,000.
Yes, right. So, um, and tonight is not the night to vote on that anyway. Um, the vote for that would be at the next meeting. We just set the property tax levy by the end of the month. That would come next month and then you would have, um, documentable to help make that decision if you so decide to raise property taxes. Um, so that's that, um, the story on the property taxes. We did run some of the numbers on the, on the sewer fund, um, so.
Well, hold on.
Yeah.
On the, uh, property tax, the, that goes into the general fund? That does. Okay.
That's what we use to pay for any, anything that's not sewer utility related.
Yep.
Would be used.
And we have, we have two funds, right? Two or three. We have our sewer, which is itself. We have our general, which is almost everything.
Yes.
And then do we, is street itself or?
Street is part of general.
Street is sort of general.
So parks, parks and street are sub-funds underneath the general fund.
Okay, so we've got two.
So that money's passing roads, paying John.
Yeah, and some, some of our, some of our payroll comes out of sewer, the sewer utility. Um, because, um, you know, part of Diane's time can be sewer, is part sewer related, or Christmas time is sewer, you know, related, so on and so forth. So there, we have a certain percentage set up where some of the, some of the payroll and some of John's time, um, is sewer related and some of it is not, so. But yeah, for the most part, day-to-day expenses, roads, parks.
Paying for an implement for the tractor, all those kinda things.
Now with the tractor though, same thing, we do have a cer- certain percentage of the tractor that's considered sewer because we can use it.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. It needs a new implement or, we don't, the city doesn't have a dump trailer or, right, yeah. It takes months to do that.
So with that, is there other things, I know that you, um, the park board had mentioned that they were going through their fees and stuff like that. Are there other things that we can, without raising property taxes for everyone, can we increase our fees for people that want to use certain things?
Sure, yeah. I mean, that's part of the, the, the fee schedule and that can be updated at any time. It doesn't have to be during budget season.
And so for instance, just because you were talking about it, if a park is rented out, um, does that have to go into the park fee or does that just go into the general fund?
I think initially, correct me if I'm wrong, initially it goes into the park, back into the park fund.
Okay.
Yeah, everything related to the park goes through the park, streets, through the streets, but they're all part of the big fund.
The general fund.
So if we needed to move money from the general fund to the park fund, um, for a big project, we could do that. Or vice versa, if the parks was somehow had too much money, we could move that to streets or something. Not that I'm gonna do that.
Right, but the only income that comes into the park are the fees and donations to the park. And it's not enough for their operating budget. So the current fund puts money into that sub-fund for it to function for the year. So we'll, you'll see that in the budget and we're gonna put some there and also the streets.
Okay.
We need to think about also the increased cost of fuel this year and, um, the increased cost of the sewer plant, the increased cost.
Oh, yeah, everything.
Everything. So you may wanna consider raising taxes to offset all the costs.
And we are gonna need, so we'll have those better numbers presented to you at the next meeting. We're, we're, the recommendation is to raise the sewer rates. The operating expenses for the new plant, um, it's, it's measurable. Um, we're already seeing, let's see. Go to my yellow, pink and orange sheet here.
I forgot the red one for all these things.
This is all written in. Oh, my, oh, I don't have my pink. My pink, uh, the pink one was, uh.
I have the one that you.
The expenditure one. Oh, you have the one that we're, we're, yeah, that's right. I got it. All right, so, um, so if you go to page eight of the expenditures. So this is the start of the sewer fund. And so you can see here, all the expenditures related to the sewer plant. And so at the beginning of it, you have various, um, things we're gonna spend the grant money on. Um, so that's not really a issue. We'll have equal in, equal revenue to the expenditures from the grant, the grant section. And then below that, you can see that we're into the sewer, um, salaries, like the salaries, the dental and everything, so, um, all that stuff. If you go down, the first big one would be sewer chemicals. You can see that in 2022, we budgeted 4,000 for chemicals. We're estimating it's gonna be $10,800, I believe is what the number was. Is that right?
It might be a little less, but yeah, it's gonna be.
So I know that you're, you're, this one is, just still says 8,000, but, um, there's a couple of things, um, that we have to buy new. We have to buy, um, there's 500 gallons a year of this, um, liquid that we buy that we, it's an alkaline liquid, um, that they'll use to control the pH, the ponds. Um, and that's gonna come in at
About.
3,500 a year.
And then the, um, the cost for the salt that goes with that is about, um, maybe 1,500.
Yeah, so there's no.
We may not have to use as much.
Who's managing this sewer treatment plant? You're paying a third party to do that?
No, the city has another employee. You probably never met him. His name's Bill. Um, and he works three days a week. And he runs our plant. He's, uh, he used to run sewer facilities for warehouse or.
He's a level one certified sewer operator.
Gotcha.
And he loves.
Crapping cheap.
And he loves to do work. I'm telling you, this guy loves it.
So growing up here, the mayor, Randy, the board ran the, did all the maintenance. He did a lot of treatment. And he did the sewer treatment.
Yeah, no, I don't. Um, and so we're, we're expecting chemicals to be, um, to be higher because before we only had to buy chlorine. Now we get, we have a, the, the small building down there creates its own chlorine. You've gotta buy these pallets of salt. And then this machine, the electrolysis machines convert the salt into chlorine. And then the byproduct is hydrogen gas and the things like, if you want hydrogen out the root, so. So we can make our own chlorine. There's a 100-gallon tank down there. It's pretty cool. Um, but we have to buy salt for that instead of buying chlorine. So it's kinda.
It's a lot cheaper than buying chlorine.
Can we bottle the hydrogen?
I was thinking we could make excess chlorine and then sell the chlorine.
Instead of buying diesel for the water pump down there, you know, hydrogen generator.
Be very progressive of a mayor to have, to bottle its own hydrogen and then use it to power. I had to list the things to do. So we're expect, we're expecting, uh, chem, can, our chemicals to be, to be more expensive. The other thing on the next page, page nine, under operations general, about two, three, two thirds of the way down the page, there's sewer electricity. Again, we're expecting that to be about $2,000 more, um, than, um, in previous years because you have twice as many aerators. Um, there's another building down there with heating and cooling and computers, um, as well as the other industrial equipment. And of course, the electrolysis, gives modes that create the chlorine that use a lot of electricity. gives modes that create the chlorine, they use a lot of electricity. So that being said, we're already seeing increases for those utilities, we're already getting the first power bills in. We have a phone and internet down there at that, in that facility now, but we didn't have that before, and so we have those extra expenses. So, I believe the estimate, Kristen, you were thinking, what were you, what were you saying the estimate was for increasing?
About ten dollars and thirty-two cents each billion cycle plus tax with pepper.
For about five or six dollars a month, it's probably gonna be the recommendation to cover all of that. So, and depending on, on, on who you are, that can have that can be impactful or some, some people not so impactful, and we understand that. And there are, some, the city does have low-income programs to help folks that meet certain income thresholds to make it easier on them to get a lower rate, things like that, so we have those in place now. The council could consider changing that threshold to a slightly higher number, which could make more people qualify for our low-income.
It could mean everybody else would have to pay more.
Which means everyone else has to pay more, but.
We'll have to run all those numbers before we make the, this is for real.
But that's the, that's kind of the, probably the worst case that you're looking at right there, is turns out to be about five dollars per month for sewer for a household. So it's not, it's, it can be a lot, and again, it's really, it's not a lot, so. Considering how much everything else has gone up in price, that's not too bad. So that'll probably be the recommendation at the next meeting. So, is it bad? It, it's not great, but also remember, we got this sewer plant for free and we were worried we were gonna have to bump everyone's. We were worried we were gonna have to bump everyone's monthly rate by thirty or forty dollars to cover that loan, and there's not gonna be that. So that worked out really well.
So if I could pass.
Yeah, please, I'll stop talking and let you.
Part of what we're gonna do too, we have like three hundred forty thousand dollars in the sewer reserve. And that's set aside for capital improvement, so if something breaks at the sewer plant, we have that money to fix. Also, if there's things we need to add or change, we have that money there as a reserve. And so now, last year and the year before, we did not contribute anything to that because we're building the plant, we want sure. So what we talk about doing is, everybody who comes in new to get access to the plant pays forty-five hundred dollars to the city. And so some of that cost, we have to pay out for, for our engineers who view plans, that kind of thing. But what we're proposing is taking four thousand dollars of that for every new person and putting it into sewer reserve. So, on your thing, you're gonna see, I mean, I guess, really low, if we've got five new people, the numbers are there. So you can put twenty thousand dollars into the sewer reserve, out of that, forty-five thousand five.
It really makes people wanna move here.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
That's cheap, we're cheaper than everybody else.
Uh, we can, is that, I mean, if we compare it, we're cheaper than everybody else.
And that's to pay to install it.
That's a, so a brand-new home, no, so a brand-new home, there's a, there's a new connection fee, it's kind of like a permit fee. So a brand-new home, that pays a forty-five hundred dollar connection fee to connect to the sewer for the first time.
Okay.
So that's a new construction.
Okay, okay.
I know, I thought you were.
Or something, I guess, if, if there was a home that was disconnected for a very, very long time and then they rehabbed it and then they had to connect again.
Yeah.
There's, well, there should still be a connection there, so they probably, anyway.
And our current fee schedule has graduated rates for that, somebody's house has been empty for so long, the line may still be there, it has to be inspected and their connection is less, five thousand or two thousand, all of that's in our fee schedule. The other thing I was gonna talk about with the sewer, obviously, we've looked at the increased expenses and we want to be able to offset that. Excuse me, we also have outstanding loans, if you look on page, page ten of the expenditures. And these are the outstanding loans listed there in the principal and then the interest underneath. So, the, only have a balance if we paid it off completely of like seven thousand dollars. And so you wouldn't be looking at an annual cost. Then we have another one that is gonna go for, I think, another three or four years, but to pay it off is less than forty thousand dollars. We, you know, pay the head, you're gonna reduce your annual requirement for, for operating costs. So that's something to consider if you guys want to, so there's other things like that that we could do that would help the sewer fund, you know, be more fluid. And, let's see. Anything that's have questions about the sewer?
Would there be a grant to help with the chemicals, maybe?
Grants, grants for operating expenses don't really exist. You can get grants to build something, you can get grants to buy a vehicle. To operate your thing, to pay salaries, pay power. I mean, that's kind of an operating expense too. They don't, there's really not grants for that kind of thing, they wanna know that, you know.
And it will help you build it.
You need to be able to.
Raise your taxes.
Okay.
So that hurt them?
Yeah, yeah, it's like, you have, how much bank capacity?
The four thousand dollars, that's, that's for a new hookup for new construction? Or is that like, cause we, we do have existing houses in the city limit that are on their own septic system.
Septic, so you didn't have.
That would be technically, you know, so you got something forcing the existing houses to update to the sewer system?
Are you?
No, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering, we actually, we actually talked about this a year ago.
Yep, it was a year ago.
And it's two hundred and, I think it was two hundred and fifty feet from the structure to the sewer line.
Yeah, if you're that far away, you don't need a, you don't have to reconnect.
And another answer to what you're saying, that the only reason we would say, yes, you're gonna have to connect is if you're, if you're septic fail. And you're before two hundred and fifty feet, then you have to.
So if you're two hundred and fifty feet, your structure is two hundred and fifty feet from the main, then you're, you can still re, like, fix or repair your existing septic system.
If the county says, yes, you can do that, then that's cool, but if not, then you have to connect to sewer.
And city doesn't regulate septics, you know, we have, yeah, it's to the county, and so, I mean, the county can say, hey, you're, you're, if you're that close, you, you know, no permit for you for your septic. They're kind of the final say on it, really, but it hasn't really been a problem either. So you can fix, you can, you're, fix your utility if you need to. But if it fails entirely and you had to rebuild the whole thing, they'd probably take a second look at it.
Gotcha.
We're lying back there.
Alpine, and then the, the city's getting ready, huh?
E Street or Alpine Court.
Right.
You had a fellow.
They're redoing the water right now, too, they're.
They're redoing the water.
You had a fellow septic owner on the council at the time, we did, we, we wrote that, actually, two people. There were, yeah, two people on the council at the time when we, when we redid the, the sewer code, and they were both on the septic, and so that must take up the close consideration. You had representation.
That's for the education.
Uh, but yeah, there's no, there's no need to force people to connect. So, so Diane was suggesting was, you know, the city has some loans from a lot of years ago, there's not much left on them, we've been paying on them for a long time. Now, the city could use a little bit of its, of the, of that three hundred thousand in the sewer reserve to pay that debt down, make it. We can't use the sewer reserve for that? What? Is it really?
Yeah, we have extra money in the sewer fund, we can budget it so that we can do.
Yeah, I see, so we have to budget it from another way, we can use the savings for it. Not from the sewer fund, now, we could use general fund money and transfer it to the sewer fund and, and do it that way. But then we wouldn't have general fund money for things like parks, roads, whatever.
And this report you were referring to earlier, I don't have it printed out, but we have way more than two months of reserve in each of our funds, which is what we require to have. And so out of that, you can do things like this. And that's not deserved to fund, it's just that, um, it's like, the artists wanna know that we're solid, they wanna know that we have a backup and that we're not overspending, so they say, could you keep two months back in your bank?
So in the, in the budget, we can find it, and we're keeping, we're, and we intend to keep most of the delicate things the same, so for instance, on the second page two, at the bottom of the expenditure, you can see that there's legal there, attorney's fees, fourteen thousand, so we're not intending to change a change, change the amount that we spent on the attorney, and previous years, that's always been a, a hot item, oh, look at the cities spending on the attorney. I can, I can say that we get, we get our money's worth, we get a really good product and we get a lot of things covered for that amount of money. And you can see better from the twenty twenty-two fiscal, which is the, kind of the year-to-date, is at thirteen thousand, you know, we're right on, we're right on target for staying, staying within, or we're very close to our budget for the year, so, I'm not, not planning on changing that any. Let's see, what else, what's the next thing?
Well, we are going to be putting in a new contract with our engineer, Steve Willie. I don't expect that it's gonna be a huge increase, but it will be in for hourly increase.
But luckily with the engineer service, a lot of what we use him for is passed through, so. So someone will come in, pay a fee on their, for their building, or whatever their building permit fee is, which includes engineering services. So even though Steve Willie might chain, charge us a little bit more on engineering services, that'll get passed through to the, the, the person getting the permit. It really won't be an increase to the city's bottom line. And he's still very reasonable, and again, I'm really happy with him, I mean, he's, he's extremely knowledgeable. He, he's fast, which saves us money too. What's next? We're, we're assuming, we're assuming that, we're gonna go, probably council will choose LeMay for our garbage provider at the start of the new year. The initial contract that we've seen with LeMay is suggesting that the city won't have to pay anything for our garbage, so the city will get its, all its garbage for free. And so, you can see on the, on page three, right there, close to the top, it says, custodial and janitorial security services. The second item down, city hall garbage services, you can see that proposed for twenty twenty-three, it says zero, it's because LeMay isn't gonna charge us anything for garbage. And that includes our parks, it also includes picking up trash and waste at the sewer plant. The, our new sewer plant has an automated system for collecting trash that comes down the sewer, and it puts it into a dumpster, and then LeMay would come and then look at it every, every week, so.
When, when are we gonna start talking about that?
We've gotten the first version of LeMay's contract, which was horrible, our attorney rewrote it and sent it back to them and we're waiting on them, on their attorney to review our draft. And I just sent them a reminder today to, that we, we need this right away. We're supposed to advertise any change in utility rates forty-five days in advance, and so we're getting close to forty-five days between, by January first, and you all still need to see the contract and like it and approve it before then, so. I told them we need that by the next council meeting, otherwise there's not gonna be enough time. And so, so yeah, so the city gets to save a little bit of money on its trash. What's next in here that's interesting? Who you all, code enforcement at the top, top of page four. Code enforcement cost would be related, could be a variety of things. A, a large part of that happens to be attorney's fees, so if there's some type of code for enforcement action against a property such as, let's say their grass was really high, which seems kind of ridiculous, but let's say their grass is really high and we told them to cut it and they didn't cut it, and we had to get the attorney involved to write a stop or, or a notice of violation and things like that. That's, th- those fees would come out of the code enforcement costs, so.
Do we really need an attorney to send out a notice?
If you do it wrong, if they, well, we, we will send the initial letter that says, here's our code, please comply with it.
Yeah.
And if they don't, then we really need to get the attorney involved because if we do it wrong, they can sue us because we're violating their rights, and so that can cost us more in the long run at the sewers.
Okay, that was where I misunderstood you.
Right, and oftentimes.
The initial notice we can send out, absolutely.
Oftentimes, it's not directly like progress, but it is that we have caught someone working without a permit. We issue a stop record order and there's a notice of violation that is generated from the attorney, and that's where that cost comes.
So, that, that's what code enforcement cost is, and, and that can be more, I mean, that's adjustable, obviously, most of these numbers, a lot of these numbers are adjustable. Some things are fixed, things salaries and things like that, they're not really adjustable, assuming we're gonna pay our people the way we said we were. But code enforcement costs and attorney's costs, so they're, they're both adjustable by, by council, and we're proposing four thousand dollars for this year. Two more lines down, utilities and environment, ARPA funds, COVID relief. So, the city got two deposits of about ninety thousand, a little over ninety thousand dollars apiece. You know, you know, everyone, you know, homeowner, individual taxpayers got money from the government for COVID, so. But so did governments, so the state got money, county got fifteen million dollars, Vader got a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Though, so Vader got a hundred and eighty-seven, we spent a little bit of that on, on the tractor, we spent some on the tractor and we spent some on the property purchase. So we still have, if you see in the far right column, seventy-five thousand four hundred dollars of unspent ARPA, ARPA funds. It's unallocated, it's just money that the city can spend on
Capital debt.
A variety of things.
No.
You use it for the chemicals?
Yeah, use it to pay off debt.
Maybe.
I mean, you know.
Comes from the treasury, US treasury, and they're very specific about what you can't use.
So, capital, capital improvement projects was one, such as land, land purchase. So, but it, it's unallocated, so the city could further, there's other properties that could be advantageous for the city to acquire. There's other, there's park stuff that we could do, we could upgrade.
Can we, yeah, we can make improvements to other city properties that we have.
There's, there's a variety of things, but I'm just pointing out that there's that money there that's still unallocated, but the council can decide how we wanna spend that. Yes.
I was gonna say, if you remember when we got our first COVID money, we put together our, what do we call it, Vader bucks that, where we actually.
Little Paul's loot.
Yeah, Little Paul's loot, where we actually gave money to everybody in town and then they could spend it at the local businesses, and then the businesses turned it into the city and then the city reimbursed it. So, so this one moved into business and moved into, and the money was free for the city. We got it from the heart, those ones, we could just take something like that.
I know the rules with this distribution were different than that distribution. But, but there is some, there are different ways we can give it back, in roundabout ways to the public, so. But this was a very unusual thing, it's very special to have this money, and I'd recommend that council spend it on something for the community that will last a long time. I mean, to give everyone a hundred bucks to pay their, to Sewerville, you know, it's, it'd be gone and that'd be the end of it. But, you know, if the city can do something that lo- lasts a long time, that, that would be my, that my. That, that would be my, that my recommendation. So, um. Let's see, what else is in here? Um, towards the bottom, community celebration expenses. Uh, we have eighty-six hundred dollars in there. Um, that would cover, uh, doing Fourth of July again, as we did last year. Season here.
Did you talk to them again?
I did, yep. I, I got a, I got a, an idea on a, on the, on a price of a show, um, better than before. And then also this would take into account not just the fireworks expenses, but, um, having portable restrooms out there, the, um, things like that. So.
Nice.
Um, what's next in here that's interesting? Road and street maintenance supplies. Um. So there's nineteen thousand in there. Um, I expect once we have the final numbers, um, with projected remaining, we'll be able to boost. Road maintenance even higher than that. Um, grant TIB expenditures, so, um. So if you remember, we got the grant last year and then this year, um, a thirty thousand and a sixty thousand. To do chip sealing around town. And then the county wasn't able to do it either year, um, because they ran out of supplies. Um, so, um, those are, those still exist. Um, and so we have an eat and, uh, we have a. Uh, if you look, there's a revenue that matches this expenditure. It's the grant coming in and then the grant going out back to county once. Once that work is done. And so, um, if it gets pushed to the summer again, that money is still there, um, for that work.
So the money was from the state?
Yes, it's gas tax.
And then we give it to the county?
So the county can do the chip seal work, um, far less expensive than going to a private company. And so we pay the county to do some road maintenance for us with their proof.
Interesting.
They're the ones who.
I don't know. So then, well, I'm confused about the whole lack of materials because in the long view, they just, you know. Picked everybody out of the homeless camp. They asphalted the thing and then the next week they're back in. And this all happened within like three, four weeks. You know, massive, I mean, enough to do one of the streets that we had set aside that we were gonna do.
Yeah, I know the county, they, they do it, supposedly they do a calculation about all the roads they wanna do and then. Not just Vader's work, but other, other cities around the county. And then they put in their order for gravel and oil and all that stuff. And I must, and I don't know, I don't know why, two years in a row, they haven't had enough left over to do. Um, to do Vader, but it's not just Vader. I mean, they ran out for their own roads too. And so, I'm not sure if the supplier could meet the demand.
So since they haven't two years in a row, can't, shouldn't we be looking at another source for that work?
I talked to the state about that. I was pretty upset about it when I heard about it, um, back in August. Um, about that possibility and the state really wasn't interested in doing that. They wanted, they really wanted to keep the county on with it. And so it's still kind of in limbo right now. I, I was, that was my suggestion, was to just get with a third party, but. The state's the one that has the money, so we have to do what they say. We don't have the money yet. The state has the money.
Gotcha.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. And I did apply for another grant, we should find out in November, um, for even more work because you can apply over here. And so there could be three years worth of work by the time next summer goes around. So that's what that number is. It's a big number. I wanted you to understand what that is. It's not a number that we actually have in our bank account. But if you look at the, a revenue, you'll see that there's a grant for it. And then that, this is the expenditure. So the state pays us. So that does a, so there's a revenue item and then we pay the county for the expenditure item. So basically, it's a, you know, it's a big zero for the city in the end.
Well, that's getting paid. I think that's where I'm stumbling on, you know, understanding of it. We didn't actually get paid. Cause if we got paid, then it would be in an account that we could not bend. So we ain't paid.
It's money that's been earmarked for us that we have not got.
That makes more sense.
And Michael also, you might, I don't know if you know this, but, um, we as the city, we, I can't spend money unless you guys allocate. So if we have to get this money, then I have to have a line out of me that's gotta pay.
Yeah.
Uh, tractor maintenance, we have two thousand in there. Um, there are record, regular maintenances on that tractor. Where you can take it back up to the shop and, um, and, uh, works with, John's been using it. We're looking at about two of those a year. Um, and then two thousand dollars would be enough to cover, would be more than enough to cover, um, getting those, our regular scheduled maintenance on it. So we can maintain that new machine. Um, and then we've always also got the wonderful snow removal in there at a thousand dollars. We always. Put it in there every year and then, um, always use it for something else or, uh, never buy the snow removal equipment. So, um, that's always fun to see. Anything else that's interesting in here? That's.
What's the planning and development funds here? Is that for?
Where is that? What's pages?
Page four. Twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah, that was another one. I missed that. Finding and development. So our city planner, Gary Cooper, um, once again, he reviews. Um, some of the, some of the building permits, permits that come in that are land use related. Um, some, um, subdividing lots, setback issues, things like that. Um, he'll review those. Um, he also looks at things for us like, um, a lot of the planning committee work regarding, um. Development regulations and things like that. So he's our, he's our other, um, hired professional. Um, and that's the budget for him. And we're under budget for the year. Um. And so twelve thousand is more, more than we probably really need for that. Um, we do have some things coming up though that I mentioned. Um, some state required updates. So there are certain documents that have to be updated every, every so many years for the state. I'm sure my master plan, your critical areas ordinance, your comprehensive plan. And so there are, um, a couple of things coming up. Um, that's gonna re, require his expertise to get those things updated. And the annexation, yeah, if, um, when we go to create an extra property, um, into the city, he'll be involved with that. Um, also, um, zoning, when that new property comes in, there's some zoning things that have to happen. So that it can get migrated from the county's, um, one dwelling in five acres, which is what it's zoned for now. To Vader's seventy-five hundred square feet or then, or commercial or whatever, you know, what, like that math that shows. And so, and so there's some zoning things will happen and that'll, that'll, that's all his domain.
Gotcha.
So I think that's everything. Um, you know, so, so, I, you know, there are probably ten items in here with wiggle room. You know, when we, once we have how much, you know, quote unquote, extra money the city has, we have that total for you. Um, you know, it can get plugged into things like streets or parks or whatever project, um, the council's interested in. Last year, we budgeted money for, um, jail repairs, um, and we budgeted money for. The C hall roof and for, um, getting the metal roofing on the shop taken care of. And so there were things, there was monies like that that we budgeted for. Um, and so the council will be able to do that again. I know it's a lot of numbers, but try to, we'll try to buy it down into, into the key areas for you to take a look at.
Yeah, and this is.
And it's gonna change, yeah. So, um, you know, the first column on expenditures is twenty twenty-two fiscal. That's year to date, right? And so you'll see that those numbers are much lower than what's budgeted. It's, it adds up tonight. So we still have all of November and all of December, um, worth of things to spend money on payroll and things like that. And so that column will continue to change throughout the year. But we can make some projections and then put that summary together for you. Because some things are predictable. We know how much we're gonna pay for it. You know, things, how much gas we're gonna buy. So. All right. I need a little dead horse right here. I'm gonna just like.
Smash the door.
If you're looking at expenditures, they will talk about it.
Nah, no one cares what we're getting money for. I wish we could control. Where all our money is coming from, but it pretty much just comes from wherever it comes from. Um, you know, you can see there that there's property tax and, um. We're still waiting on the state to send us their estimate on how much money they're gonna collect for us via property tax. And then once they send us that number, then we can plug that number into here, uh, their projection for next year. Um, so we're estimating sixty thousand dollars. And you can see each one of these columns in the revenue sheet are a year. So twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two. You can see twenty twenty-two is at forty thousand. The year's not over yet. And so look at the previous three years, we're pretty steady, fifty-nine, sixty-four, fifty-nine. Um, and so we're estimating sixty. Um, which could be slightly more or slight less with more.
With an increase.
With more homes being built, um, already this year, we know of, it's, it's, it's bound to go up. Uh, the county did not lower property taxes. I'm sure you probably realize that. And so it's not gonna be lower.
Right.
So, um, and then you can also come through here. It's interesting to see where all the city's money comes from. Um, local sales tax, you can see how much money that we get in sales tax, um, criminal justice. Um, telephone franchise fees, electric power company taxes, um, all these things that you pay taxes for on your normal utility bills. Um, you know, they get broken down and go to the different municipalities and you can see Vader's fees right there. So, building permit fees, um, we were sure on the second page, it's building permit fees at the top. We were, we were, we were sure to make sure that if there, for the most part, building permit fees, when we get building permits. Our fees are set at our expenses. So, I mean, you know, we're, the city's not in the hat, in, in the business of trying to make money on the building permits. But we don't wanna lose money either. And so if you look at the building permits here, you'll see that those numbers for revenue. Have corresponding expenditures. So again, that should be like kind of a net zero for the city where all the money we're collecting on the building permits. We're spending on our engineer, on our planner, on, um, you know, our employees' time to. Execute the permits and things like that. So. And there's a variety of things in here that, um, you know, have odd names from the state. Cities assistance, criminal justice. DUI studies, liquor exercise tax, liquor profits. You know, this is just, the state is sending us money and it has a label when they send it to us. So we, we code. Yeah, we code it that way. So that's where all our money comes from. Lots of little buckets.
With the grant money, it, it disguises how we're really doing with our operating funds. We have been watching very carefully and we are basically getting at almost the same amount that we're paying now every month. So we're staying.
Yeah, I was, we're careful when we're putting this together that, so that, you know, we don't have. A grant coming in as revenue and then we don't. And we, cause if we get a grant, it's for a particular purpose, right? We get a hundred thousand dollars for the outfall, it goes to the outfall project. We wanna make sure we include those expenditures on there. Otherwise. You know, we're, we're inventing money.
Yeah, that is.
How's the, uh?
John's truck is aged.
Old.
Yeah, it's a manual transmission. It's pretty neat.
That's cool.
Um, yeah, it is, um, it's all he does. He does really good maintenance on it. But, um. I was talking, I did kind of, um, doing research on some of the, the wishlist items from folks around the city. And one of those things is a dump trailer. Um, thank you, Mr. Ferguson, for letting John borrow your dump trailer.
He never took me up on it.
Oh, he didn't? The dump trailer was he using?
I have no idea.
Oh.
I have no idea. He didn't want it.
Well, well, thank you for the offer anyway. I guess he borrowed one of his family members. Well, anyway, um, I shouldn't have to do that. Um, you know, I did stop by at a, um, at the, one of the store trailer shops earlier this week. Um, way back from jury duty. And, um, they had a sale on a dump trailer that was big enough to carry the tractor. Um, which would be very handy if you wanted to take it to the park or something, or, or if you wanted to take it up to Jennings himself for the service. Um, and it was ninety-five hundred dollars. Right now is the sale. It's like a, something by fourteen, ten by fourteen, I think is what they said it was. Um.
Seven by fourteen.
Seven by fourteen, um, which would be big, yeah, seven, seven by fourteen, uh, for ninety-five hundred dollars right now.
Good deal.
Um.
It's a great deal.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's got a bunch of sales up there. He's got iron bowls and all kinds of stuff.
Iron bowls and good quality too.
So, you know, once we have the, 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 those estimates for you on what kind of.
Yeah.
What, what extra money the city has. Um, maybe that's an expenditure that, that council might wanna approve.
Can the city, um, if we did have a dump trailer, could the city rent it out?
I don't know if we want to.
No.
As a revenue, as, we're like a business?
No.
Can rent the car?
We might lend it to another city, that kind of thing. But then you have to have a memorandum of understanding to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, but that was kind of the big item on John's wishlist was a dump trailer. Well. He always sneaks excavator into every conversation we have, but, um, every, it seems like everything is remedied by having an, an excavator. It was like, oh, change, change lights on a pole. Wow, I had an excavator. It's just.
Yeah.
Shut up then. So, anyway.
Not a fossil was around.
So, um, but I know a dump trailer, you know, there's, there's repeated uses for a dump trailer that he could, he could use. So that's one thing.
And the truck, uh, we are able to buy through the, uh, the, it's the state of the federal surplus. How's that? Uh, they have a warehouse that come water. And, um, they get all kind of vehicles and stuff like that. And they can sell those to us. So we could get it for, might not be brand new, but a newer one, obviously than what we have right now. For a pretty good deal.
And we could start kind of a multi-year savings project where we take two or three years and put, you know, fifteen grand into a. Into an account or into one of the sub-funds every year, um, you know, budget for it slowly over time and then three years buy a truck for forty-five.
Or you could, doesn't make a point if your, so, I mean, your property tax increases.
Good.
Does it have to be through the, the state? Can we just go down to George and buy his truck?
No.
Well, we have to.
Get to shop around.
Yeah, we have to shop around.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
But, yeah, you could go to a dealer and buy it.
No, I'm just saying, like a guy down the street's got one for sale.
George?
I'm just saying.
Oh.
I just said, I'm just saying.
Okay. So buy someone, buy a private party's used vehicle?
Yeah.
I mean, once again, if you shop around for used vehicles, um.
Yeah.
George had the best price, maybe.
Also, you know, used, used, they're not to sneeze about. They've got some good used ones out there.
Well, I'm sure this pickup, this pickup was used when we got it, forever ago. Um, so anyway, so, so the truck is definitely something, you know, to look at on the, on a public website. They're a pretty big item that. Probably get updated. Um, yeah, and I know the parks, um, as far as big ticket items. Um, you know, we're gonna, the jail, it's the jail. Um, what's gonna be remaining on the jail is, um, maybe a good, um. Paint, um, paint removal and crack and painting. Um, that'll be what's left on the jail. So that's a big project. Um, permanent bathroom structures at McMurphy Park. Right now, there's porta-potties down there. Um, and having, um, a permanent vault toilet down there would be nice.
Oh, we didn't get sewer down there yet.
There's no sewer down there. Um, even if we did, um, getting, you'd need a lift station. Or a grinder pump or something to get it from the bottom of the park up to where the sewer would be. So there's a, there's a lot of moving parts to that, to that. So there's a, there's a lot of moving parts to that, to that project, kind of the power down there and things, so.
Why do the restaurants have to go down close to the water?
That's where everyone's at. That's where everyone is at. Close to the water is where everyone, where everyone's at. Up in the middle of the park, no one would use it.
That water never comes across that field there?
It is in the, if you look at the maps, it is in the FEMA flood zones, but it generally doesn't come across there. And if we had a concrete bathroom structure similar to what's at Warden Park, it would be unaffected.
Our engineer would design it.
It'd be all concrete.
Get mined and all that stuff.
Those are the big projects out there.
Washed out.
Well, once again, we'll have
There'll be a conversation.
Yeah, we'll have more conversation. Final numbers for you. You can decide about the levy of the next one and have a vote on it. Also, we'll probably have sewer rate analysis for you. Numbers as far as how much quote unquote, extra money the city has, where do you want to stick it? And I will be sending you a letter early in the week. State law requires that I send you a budget letter. And so you should see that next week. See, Monday's the thirty-first. So some, sometime in the middle of the week, probably. You'll see my little budget letter with, with a summary. And a lot of it will be what I've said already. All right. Anyone else want to talk? Okay. All right, moving on to item number three, council considered Rogland's change order number seven for twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars.
I'll make a motion that we approve Rogland's change order number seven for twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Second, we have a motion, Mr. Parsons, to approve Rogland's change order number seven. We have a second by Mr. Ferguson discussion.
What's this for?
The wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, I know, but another gate. Why does he need another gate? He's just saying that he's always been using.
So they found out, after the initial design only called for one gate, they found out that a second gate necessary further down. And so that's thirteen hundred dollars. The pallet rack, four thousand. So the salt, we buy these pallets of forty-pound bags of salt. I mean, forty pounds a bag, a whole pallet of it. John drives a flatbed, his, his pickup to town, gets the thing, they load it with a forklift. And he brought, he brings it down to the, to the wastewater plant and John and Bill were unloading forty-pound bags of salt off the back of the truck from one pallet to another into the building. And so once you go down there, eventually you'll see it's all concrete, nice and smooth down there. And so they said, let's get a pallet jack that's expensive to the grant. This is all grant expended, expense. And then they can just take it right off the truck because it goes way high up to the, up to the top of the bed of the pit truck. Bring the whole pallet off, roll it right into the, right into the room where the chlorine creation is at. And Bill can actually take the bag, take the pallet jack and move it right up to this tank. The tank is about eye level. And instead of having to take the forty-pound bag of salt, lifting it up and then pour it into this tank that's at eye level, he just takes the pallet jack and just right up to the edge and then takes the salt bag and just pours it right off.
And as he works through the material.
And so it's, it's easy on, it's easier for John, it's easier for Bill. It just makes sense. It's, it's and, yeah, and actually it did. It came up during the, the safety meeting that we were having here at City Hall. We do a, do a month of meetings, staff meeting. And then the safety portion, that came up. And so we got, we got Southwest to get us the pallet jack. Expended to the grant because it's needed for down there. So that's what the four thousand for, a chemical feed pump. They found that they needed another pump to move, move chemical around. So that's that. And then vinyl flooring. So in the initial design of the, the building, they didn't, they didn't design any flooring. So it's just bare concrete that was unfinished. And so they've got the office in there and the lab in there and everything. And the concrete is just generating this dust. It's just, everything is covered in dust in there. And so it was decided to put some vinyl flooring down in there to take care of that problem. So vinyl flooring in the lab is nice because you can just wipe up any, any, any issues and mop it and everything. So, so that's the change order. Flooring, a pallet jack, a feed pump and another gate. And it all goes to the grant. Do we have a person, a second for the discussion? I hear you now. All those in favor of approving Rogland's change order number seven, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries. Item number four, council considered the recommendation of changing Ninth and East Street intersection from a two-way stop to a four-way stop. So for you, for you council members that are familiar with Ninth and E, which I believe is, should be three of you that are familiar with Ninth and E right now. Ninth runs all the way across town. And at the top of the hill, there's only, there's one stop sign at D. And then from then all the way down to the end, it's just an open, an open run. Homeowners in that area have been complaining about vehicles just speeding the full length of Ninth all the way down. And they've,
Something a law enforcement issue.
They've, they've said that they've seen a number of near misses at the, at the East Street intersection. And so homeowners have, some homeowners have dropped off requests to change that to a four-way stop. And so we're presenting that to council to approve, approve it as a four-way stop. And if so, then we'll buy a couple of signs. We'll put a traffic, traffic revision for a while. And it's a four-way stop. It's not a big deal. And
What about the roads? Like the one between my house and the church? Those go through there.
One sixth.
Yeah, they go through there like it ain't nothing. Most of them don't even look.
Yeah, if there's some
I mean, all the roads like that need signs because they just blow through it.
Yeah, if they're, I mean, making, making an intersection as a four-way is a great way to slow people down through there. You know, it's just a couple of signs and, and, and it can make a big impact. I know that over time, over the years, the city has talked about putting speed bumps in and things like that. And you know, there's, there's pros and cons to that. So I mean, if you have, if you have a suggestion on a, on a good location over there, at one of the more busier intersections, maybe, maybe B Street or something like that.
Yeah, because like I said, they just
And it's not, not a big deal to turn it into a four-way if you think it would be beneficial.
Well, not a four-way, just have them stop at the main road. Because they go off the dirt roads and just cross like Sixth Street. Like it ain't nothing. I've almost hit people.
Oh, on the outlet, yeah, on the outlet.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, they just, they, they, so they drive across Six without even stopping?
Yeah, I've almost hit them. I mean, a lot of people's almost hit them.
Well, since Ninth Street and East Street is on here, I make a motion that we approve the stop sign for Ninth, the four-way stop for Ninth and E.
The motion by Mr. Parsons to approve changing Ninth and E intersection to a four-way stop. We have a second. Second by Mr. Hall. Further discussion? So, yeah, it's, if you see some safety issues like that, even if it's just putting stop signs at those alleys, we can do that. We're actually, yeah, we're putting together, we're doing an audit right now of all the, the, the signs in town. Pretty much got it done already. We just need to compile the data. And any stop signs that are unlegible anymore, anymore, road signs that are wooden, which we still have wooden signs around that you have, check out, watch, look at some of the road signs.
They're wood?
They're wood. Yeah. So any of that stuff, so we're putting together an audit to replace all of that. And then any of the wooden four-by-fours that are being used, the paint, the painted four-by-fours that are being used as street posts, we're going to replace all of those with metal posts. So we're going to put together a, put a full list and then make a huge truckload of parts for John to work on all summer long. So, but that freshens the city up and fixes a lot of problems. All right, anyway, further discussion about Anthony. All those in favor, say aye. The opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. Public comment? Any members of the public have any comments?
Yeah, Robert Goff here. Eighth and B Streets also a menace for racing down the road.
Right out here.
It's right here.
Okay. Noted. Thank you.
Isn't that, isn't that a four-way stop?
B, B doesn't have a stop sign.
B doesn't have the stop.
All the way here. Remember growing up, the route to come back from the store was turn on B Street and then go to Ninth Street. And then I could go all the way home without hitting the stop sign. My first time driving. I'm like, come on, four-way stop, stop, stop.
It's funny. Little things that bothered us.
Yeah. Oh, bother? No, just notice.
You know the one route through town will avoid every stop sign.
Yeah, it was awesome. You just, you just do the speed limit and drive, not stop.
Yeah, I'm going to look for that now.
There isn't one.
There isn't one anymore?
No, no, there's, there's stop signs. Yeah. So you're going to wash those roads.
All right, elected official comments? Any elected officials have anything they'd like to say?
Yes, at that intersection is where there's a bus stop. And I think that's raising a lot of concern with some of the parents.
Oh, and Ninth and E?
Yeah.
It is true, yes.
And so I, you know, yeah, why are they not having the old school as their bus stop location instead of your front yard? You know, like, I mean, it's, it's so crowded and all the cars are parked there. They're double parked. They got their lights on in every direction. And so it's blinding and then you can't see the kids. So it's really, I mean, it's a public safety issue.
Yeah, well, they, they stop
One block away.
They stop at several places through town. That's not the only place they stop. Because they stop there and then they take a turn and they go down to Ninth and D and they stop there a block down. And then, and then hopefully turn or they go further down. I don't know why they picked that location.
Yeah, why don't they just pull into the old school parking lot and have everybody meet there?
Well, because the idea is that, the fact, I think the fact that people are parking their cars there to pick their kids up, that's not really the school district's call. I mean, that's the individual.
It's the school bus or the bus hall.
So it's not, not all the kids are getting picked up by cars.
Yeah.
Point. Like some of the, the idea to stop there is that it's close, the kids can walk home from there. So some kids are walking home from there. So you wouldn't want them to have to walk.
And that's what we always got on the bus.
All that far away. Hey, I have Mr. Green's phone number and email address. He's the school district superintendent. I can give it to you after the meeting if you'd like to talk to him. He's a great guy. He's very receptive.
It's Casa Rock. It's Casa Rock. I know the kids that are getting on the bus.
We've had some folks come to us since we're on the corner there that wanted to install a bus stop there, like a twenty by, a twenty by ten covered shelter on the corner so that all the kids can hang out and not be in the rain. While that's a great idea, they wouldn't hang out more than just the bus for bus, bus drop-off and pickups. And it would turn into the, like a community hangout spot.
You'd have a transient.
I always stood out in the rain.
I thought that was a bad idea.
That's what you say, set it up by your cup.
Yeah, all right, I'll get you. All right, any other elected officials?
Is there any other mention about the three-way stop over there by the Dollar General?
Three-way stop by the Dollar General? You mean off the, off the Lumac Bader Road?
Yeah.
That's a state highway.
It's not our jurisdiction, but what about?
Oh, okay. I didn't know if it was ours or was because
Soon as you cross the creek, you're out of the city.
Okay, okay. Cars coming around the curve, you look one way, look, nothing, nothing.
Yeah, the rider would, you look and it's not there and you look again and it is. Are you suggesting making a, making a three-way stop?
Yeah.
State Department of Transportation.
No problem.
No listeners.
You said that was the state?
Yeah, I'll send it to the Department of Transportation. Have a five or six. Okay. For looking official comment. All right, this meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-nine PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Randy.
Good.
Thank you for your time, Mayor.